Associate Pastor of Grace Church. If you would please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we want to thank you for who you are. You're a God of grace and mercy and kindness and goodness and justice. And so, we want to thank you. Father, I want to thank you for this city council. We ask that you give them wisdom as they govern and to do that important task of governing the city. And Father, I want to thank you for all the first responders and all the city employees that work so hard and tirelessly as the police. I ask that you protect them and fire department protect them and all the other workers. Give them guidance and your wisdom. Father, I just ask that this council receive your wisdom in doing the things of this city that's best for this city. And Father, I pray for this city. And Father, I want to pray for this world, so much turmoil. And we ask for your protection and guidance and all the government leaders of the world. And I ask it in the name that's above every name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmembers Huff, Perkins, Stewart, DeLucy, Steinmeier, Hobart, Mayor Weir.
Here.
We do have one citizen who requested to speak to the council this evening. She is a non-resident, so we would need a motion to suspend the rules of order to allow for this citizen to speak.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff, Perkins, Stewart, DeLucy, Steinmeier, Hobart, Mayor Weir.
Yes. Michelle Sumstead wishes to speak to the council regarding the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I appreciate you guys letting me speak tonight. Normally, as you all know, I don't normally have notes, so I'm going to try and go by them as best I can so I can get up and down quickly. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Sergeant John Bullard's widow, Terry Bullard, for joining us tonight. As you all know, we lost John back in August of last year, so. I'm here tonight to speak in regards to the agenda item which is the funding source of the police department's involvement at the 2022 National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Independence will have retired Sergeant John Bullard, who passed away August 11th of 2021, along with Officer Blaise Madrid Evans, who was killed in the line of duty on September 15th, 2021, enshrined onto the wall, sorry, enshrined onto the law enforcement officers' memorial wall for giving their ultimate sacrifice to the city and to its residents. The contingent of officers that will attend are motorcycle unit, honor guard, family support team, the dispatcher who dispatched the incident, along with Officer Madrid Evans, This event will be a week long. It's basically a funeral event for an entire week. All the events that you guys see when we go through one of these, that's, it's a week long of that. This means all in attendance will have jobs to do. Will have specific duties, specific tasks, all of which will take a very large emotional toll on everybody that's out there. I'm just going to say leadership starts at the top, which the top for the city of Independence is the six of you here and you, Karen. With, sorry, with that, we've worked diligently with the city manager to try and come up with funding for this trip. He understands the ultimate sacrifice and understands the struggles that we have gone through over the past year. Our department has had too much loss over the last year, and I ask that this isn't made into a political debate. We need to be able to begin the healing process, which this event can start. Right now is when we need your leadership, care and compassion. We, as an agency and as a city, have made a commitment to these families and to the officers to stand by their side with the sacrifices that their family member has made and that the officers have made. So I ask that you guys vote yes to that funding source tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens who wish to address the council this evening?
I would like to. Thank you. My name's Colleen Huff, and I'm a resident of Independence. And the reason why I'm here this evening is, basically, I was a candidate in the primary election, and I was short 106 votes to move into the general election. And then after that election was certified, one of the candidates withdrew. And basically, in looking at the charter, there's no provision for this, so I'm asking the council members to adopt a resolution to address such a situation to prevent this from happening in the future because this has disenfranchised thousands of voters. And as a candidate that worked really hard, I also feel a little disenfranchised myself. And the charter states that if you accept the candidacy, that you agree to move into the general election. And also, the charter states that there shall be no provision for withdrawal of a successful primary candidate prior to the general election. And what I have here is media report after media report after media report that says one of the mayor candidates withdrew. And that leaves the candidate on the ballot but not campaigning, which is, like I said, very unfair to the residents of Independence. So if the council members would please, you know, create a resolution to address this type of situation, should it occur in the future, by allowing the runner-up the opportunity to move forward since they do have the desire to be the mayor of Independence. Thank you.
I would ask permission from the council to address the statements that were made. Is there any objection?
I have no objection.
The ballot has been certified that was on the consent agenda for this evening for the mayor and at-large election results. There's no obligation for any candidate to campaign. My name will appear on the ballot on April the 5th. I don't, I can't control what is reported in the media. I never said I was withdrawing, so I said I was ceasing my campaign. And there's no obligation for a candidate to engage in a campaign. So we will be voting on that tonight on the consent agenda to certify the February 8th, 2022, primary mayor and at-large election results. Thank you. Next is our presentation resolution regarding the employee of the month. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-726, a resolution recognizing Tammy Lindsay, Human Resources Analyst with the Human Resources Department, as the Employee of the Month for March 2022. Whereas, the city employee recognition program recognizes outstanding performance by employees of the city of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the Employee of the Month for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service. And whereas the employee recognition committee has selected Tammy Lindsay, Human Resources Analyst with the Human Resources Department, as the Employee of the Month for March 2022.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Tammy, would you like to come forward and receive your proclamation or resolution? Excuse me. Thank you very much. This brings us to our consent agenda.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items any council member wishes pulled for separate consideration?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The very last one is 22-723. It's about procurement policy. I'd like to pull that from the vote.
Okay. Are there any other items? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll on the consent agenda minus resolution 22-723?
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Councilmember DeLucy, 22-723.
And I've been really affected with this procurement policy. I wanted to study it closer, and I don't know that the city council up here has done that. So I'd ask if we continue that just a couple of weeks to get an actual study going on that. Mr. Manager, is that possible?
We serve at the pleasure of the council.
I would appreciate continuing then, 22-723.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion to postpone this to, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear, council member, would you, just till the next council meeting?
I would like a study session. Yes.
Okay, so continue this item till March 21st and put it on the March 14th study session?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes, thank you.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. This takes us to our regular agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-724, a resolution removing an ordinance from council agenda 3722 until investigation of the police office issues are concluded.
Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart? DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item passes.
Bill number 22-725, a resolution for the city council to post competitive bids in pertinent venues to specifically recruit and hire a forensic investigator slash audit firm with proven experience in comprehensive investigations of potential misuse of public funds to conduct a detailed thorough investigation of all actions and documentation of the creation and practice of excessive overtime payments to an employee not classified to do such work for the city, to which excessive overtime pay was dispersed from public funds and report such findings to the city council.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I got a letter from the city manager dated March 6, 2022. I'm in this letter, talked a little bit about some things about the charter, so I was going to ask the city attorney, did you review this resolution?
I did.
Did you find any charter violations in there?
The, there are no, there are no violations of the charter in the resolution itself.
What is that? There are, are there other charter violations that are not in the resolution?
What that, what that means is depending on what the outcome of that resolution was and any potential report or action items that came from that resolution could potentially be in conflict with the charter, but that's not something that I can know at this point in time.
Okay, so I did see one fat finger mistake in there, and that was on the second page there. Instead of 1950, it should be 1960 and 61, which I need to amend that date on the charter down the third thing down on the second page. So I'll make a motion to change that to 6061 on them two dates instead of 5051.
Okay, there's a motion to amend. Sir, does that need a motion to amend for a script errors error?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, I'm sorry, motion passes.
Just wait. Okay, so let me get back on track with this on what the city council was saying there about any violations in the future on this. I want to clarify that at this point, which I give everyone up here a copy of it, and I'll read it. Mayor and the city council, city manager Zach Walker has submitted an email dated March the 6th, 2022, wherein he recommends the council not approve resolution 22-725. He cites several charter sections and an International City Managers Association theory of manager versus council roles. He also claims inaccuracies exist in the resolution. Any scribe errors or mistakes can be corrected. The city manager did not note or did not cite city charter section 2.107 on the council. Powers that codify that the city council's obligation and duty to exercise diligent oversight of the public funds to inquire into the conduct of any office, department, or agency of the city government and investigate municipal affairs. Noting in the charter prevents the city council from voting to, there's nothing in the charter that prevents the city council from voting to do a forensic investigation of any city office or department alleged of misusing public funds. The city manager cites charter section 1.2 and section 2.15 and section 3.3. A close reading of these sections does not limit the city council's power to conduct an investigation. In the event of a forensic investigation found personal misconduct should, would, or such would be turned over to the city manager for his deposition under the charter. The facts discovered by such investigation would either hinder the city manager using such evidence in his dealing with personal matter to suggest otherwise as akin to waving a red herring. However, if the investigation reveals criminal violations of federal and state laws, grant rules, or violations of the city charter, then the city council would have the obligation to inform the agency of the jurisdiction of the findings or pursue charter violations as outlined in the charter. The city manager quotes several personnel-related sections as though this resolution will result in council encroachment of the city manager's appointing and removal authority. Nothing in this resolution upsurks the city manager's charter established province in personal matters, personnel matters. Resolution 22-725 calls for an impartial and thorough investigation of at least his office and three departments under his authority. City Charter's section 3.2 establishes the citizen elected city council appoints a city manager not elected, who shall be responsible therefore to the council and supervise and control directly indirectly all administrative departments, agencies, officers, and employees of the city. The city manager cannot remove himself from the chain of command under his departments failed to do their due diligence and charter duties to review and safeguard against misuse of public funds. Only a forensic investigation will go to the truth of who, what, when, how, and how long this has been going on. I'm submitted for the city manager to lobby against, I submit for the city manager to lobby against this resolution under the guise of responding to a request for background information while slinging a flimsy host of charter sites on the wall hoping some stick is crossing over from his administrative role as a manager to trespassing on the political and policy roles of the governing body. His strong call, do not approve resolution 22-725 conflicts with his pursuant views of the city council, their manager council operations, and the ICMA clearly distincts that roles, distinction of that roles. Almost comical, the city manager would lead us to believe that paying $160,000 in overtime to employ working in two offices is a day-to-day operation. More so the critical need for forensic investigation to determine if misuse funds is, in fact, a day-to-day operation under the city manager's control. For the city manager to ask for his personal investigation limited to the police department and related issues in the police department be completed while posing a forensic deep dive investigation would only encompass his office. The city council and the last three departments under his sole control make one wonder if the letter of opposition is an effort to divert the council from actually getting to the bottom of this issue. I add, the city manager embarked on hiring a firm to investigate the excessive overtime without notifying or conferring on the scope and perimeter of such investigation with the city council. I encourage my fellow council members to resist the city manager's stratum and stand strong for the taxpayers. We need to pass this resolution to fulfill our duty to represent their interests by faithfully oversight through a deep investigation of the use of the misuse of the funds. It is our responsibility per oath to be fully informed on how employees could be paid overtime for working two job classifications at the same time in violation of the charter. I request the city clerk attaches the transparency.
Discussion on item two.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cover, as we were speaking here earlier, the question was immediately there wasn't, didn't seem to be any charter violations or anything coming through through your initial investigation or review of this resolution. But you seemed to stop short of a further review. There could possibly be some lines that are blurred perhaps? Was that my read?
What I want to clarify is all of this, what this resolution would do would be to post, put out for bid, seeking someone to perform a long list of duties that are contained in the resolution. Simply seeking someone to do all of those things isn't in and of itself a charter violation to the extent that some of those things, if, if came to fruition, were accomplished, then that is possible, but I can't speculate on that at this point in time. At this point in time, we don't even, I mean, I don't know who would respond, whether you all, how you all would, would, you know, select someone, if you would narrow down the scope at some point. So in and of itself, the resolution is, is not, doesn't contain anything that would violate the charter right now, which is putting this out to bid. How that progressed through the future, I'd have to see what decisions you all made and what you asked of those, you know, of that auditor or something like that to do. So I can't, I don't want to speculate on that. I just want to make it clear that if, if going all the way through, there are, yes, there are some, some possibilities of, of conflicts with the charter in some of the language here, but that doesn't mean that just posting it as putting it out to bid in and of itself would constitute a charter violation.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
After reading your email, I just wanted to ask a few questions, just a process question, if I could, please. So council's job is, is policy development and the assessment of the effectiveness of those policies within the community. So by definition, policy is a course or principle of action adopted or proposed by government, business, or individual. So there are two components to this. First is the course of action. This would be a process which is defined as a series of actions or steps taken in order to achieve a particular end. So the end goal is to make sure public dollars are being used properly, using a defined process that establishes the proper course of action. Is that what you were trying to say to us?
No.
Okay. Okay, so the second component is principle. This is defined as a fundamental truth or proposition that serves as a foundation for a system of belief or behavior or for a chain of reasoning. So Mr. Walker, you mentioned that you've led and been involved in a number of investigations, grievances, workplace violence, improper use of city resources, conflicts of interest, sexual harassment, theft, reviews of employee policy, procedure adherence. So it sounds like from a process standpoint, you have experience to lead an investigation into this latest use of city resources situation. Would that be correct?
That's a misrepresentation of my words.
Okay. So you mentioned it is the council's job to assess the effectiveness of these policies. So with regard to this resolution and where we go from here, will you and whatever auditor we've hired, report back to the council on where the breakdown occurred and what we need to do to fix it?
My initial statement to the council and the public stated that we would, to the extent we were allowed to by law.
Okay. And if it's a policy issue, is there lack of clarity of institutional controls that is causing these problems to occur?
That's to be determined.
Okay. Well, you'd mentioned several investigations, so I just was wondering. In assessing effectiveness, the other aspect is principle, which is beliefs and behaviors. So do we have a cultural problem in this city?
I'm not tracking all your definitions. I know that I have a whistleblower who had the confidence to come forward to me because of the culture that I have built and reported to me the alleged wrongdoing in the department. We started to look into it. We noticed it. We publicly, some might even say transparently, reported that to the public. We hired an investigator when we found out it was beyond our capacity as staff to deal with it and dedicate the time, energy, and resources to it. And we are waiting for that personnel investigation to play out, and we'll decide at that time what, if any, discipline is merited and for what or how many employees.
Okay. And while it's good we're investigating situations like improper use of funds, harassment, theft, conflicts of interest, I'm wondering why do these things continue to happen? And as the CEO of the city, I'd like to know what we're doing to make sure the cultures align, to ensure that our team is on board with the purpose we have to serve in the best interests of our citizens.
Sure, I'll give you an example. When I was first hired in 2016, I did an audit of Independence Power and Light, and that audit included an employee survey where the employees were allowed to provide feedback to us. Reported a employee, I believe it was a lineman who worked in the transmission and distribution network, who twice was knocked out cold by one of his coworkers. Later on down the road, that same situation played out, and we terminated that employee because they directed their staff to, quote, "deal with it in-house." So as we do not tolerate workplace violence, my approach as city manager has been to terminate employees who violate our policies.
Okay. And I appreciate that. I know that, that you did take charge of that. I would, you and I have had conversations about cultural concerns within our city. Have we?
We have, yes.
Okay. So at some point, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I would like for us to, to have you share your thoughts on, on the issue of culture, what we're trying to do with correcting it.
If you'd be open to it, I would love to have a weekly meeting with you like four of your colleagues do.
I, I would like to meet with you.
I would love to.
And I've sent, I've said that. So on the second subject, you mentioned the council's direct oversight of four officials, and that includes you. There's quite a bit of confusion around the review, and I'm just trying, I want you to know, I'm trying to make sure that the review process that you have in your contract that we're obligated to fulfill is fulfilled.
Thank you.
According to that contract. Okay, so I've asked for a review. I've asked to, for this council to help you and just to be able to assess the effectiveness of our process. I feel like it's still important that we do that at some point. Your contract states that we're to review your performance at least once a year in September, but the forms are sent out in October. If we're to continue in the, the current contractual agreement we have with you, we have to make decisions moving forward by September, as your contract will renew for two years, October 1st. Pardon me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, councilman?
I think we're borderline open records request violation. We.
Point of order, who has the floor?
Just a moment. Uh, just a moment, please.
We, uh, this is nowhere on the agenda and doesn't have anything to do with the resolution.
Well, it does for my support of the resolution.
Okay, Councilman Steinmeier.
So I, that's all. I just want to make sure that, that we are, as a council, we're obligated to follow his contract. And I expect that we need to ask more of ourselves if, if we're to help Mr. Wa- Walker get the management of this city up to speed. And that's why I will be in support of this resolution.
Okay, I have some questions regarding this item and some information also to share. Mr. Walker, as he stated in, I believe, our last full council meeting, has assigned this to Assistant City Manager Adam Norris to lead, taking himself out of controlling the, or having any commu- direct communication with the special counsel. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I had stated that I had requested to speak with the special counsel. Those meetings are, I, were, I was asked to work through Assistant City Manager Adam Norris to schedule that. Mr. Norris provided me with the telephone number and a special email address that has been set up for the council to, or anybody, to contact our special counsel if they wanted to discuss this investigation, which I did. I contacted Mr. Nelson, I've spoken with him twice. I contacted Councilman Huff on Friday to talk to him about this item that is on the agenda tonight. We did not connect and have not spoken about it. I sent an email to the city clerk and the city attorney inquiring about the legality of discussing the scope of this investigation in a closed session. The council was, the entire council was copied on that email. I received one response from Councilmember DeLuci. I wasn't, I'm not calling for a special session, I'm inquiring if there would be a, a section of the Missouri Sunshine Law that would allow for the council to meet and discuss the scope of this investigation that has been assigned to special counsel. I've been advised by the city clerk and the city attorney that there would be a section of the Sunshine Law, which I can't quote off the top of my head, about confidential communication. So I spoke to Assistant City Manager Adam Norris regarding this. I think it would be very beneficial for all of us to hear the same thing at the same time regarding the scope of this investigation and what Mr. Nelson, expertise he has included to ensure that there is a thorough investigation of this matter, which includes him subcontracting with a forensic accountant, which he has done, to look into this, into areas where he requires some additional expertise. So I will call an executive session for this council to get together to understand clearly the scope of this investigation, the expertise that is being utilized to ensure that we get to the bottom of this issue. I have no objection to employing whatever resources we need to make sure that the taxpayers' dollars and the public trust is, is thoroughly investigated. However, I don't know from this resolution when this might occur, how, what the cost might be, which we won't know until we get competitive bids. The source of this funding, which is fine, we will certainly work that out. But it seems to me that we do not need to conduct two investigations at the same time. So I would move that we postpone this resolution until March the twenty-first, our next council meeting, pending an executive session, which I will call between now and then, so this entire council fully understands what is being looked at, who is looking at it, and the, the breadth and depth of this investigation. So my motion is to postpone this item until March twenty-first.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, yes.
I have several, excuse me, I have several points to make. Should I make them now before we, we vote on the motion or wait until afterwards? Does it make any difference?
It doesn't, is it regarding the motion or is it regarding item number two?
Item number two.
Once the motion is voted on, if the motion to postpone is successful, then it will move on on the agenda. So to the extent you want to address it at all tonight with certainty, then it would be better to do it now because you may not have the opportunity if the motion to postpone passes.
Perfect, I'm trying to stay with policy.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'm, I am confident with the direction that we're moving with this investigation. I'm in confidence in our city manager and the team that he has assessed and given to the city to get this moving forward. He has been more than transparent and honest and straightforward with conversations with, I believe, all the council when this thing first popped his head up, to give us the complete transparency of what's taking place when we're moving forward. So I'm fine with that. Two, I do take exceptions with Councilman Steinmeier saying that this council needs to help Mr. Walker. In reality, Mr. Steinmeier, you need to help Mr. Walker. And those three, and those three who do not have regular engagement with Mr. Walker. I meet with Mr. Walker on a regular basis, not only on a one-on-one, but different times of, of the week when we go and talk about constituent issues, site visits, other discussions. Everybody over here, minus a few of your police officers, right? I talk with on a regular basis and deal with them on a regular basis, either in their office, through email, on site visits. We discuss policy, decision makings, and everything of the like. I think the lack of what is taking place here is not the council, it's three members of this council. And I will stand by that.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Hobart.
I support what Mr. Perkins said completely.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Council, excuse me, Councilmember Huff?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Ware?
Yes.
Seven, four, three, four.
Motion fails. Is there any further discussion on item number two? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
No.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Ware?
No. Item number two fails. Let's take this to our ordinances, Madam State Clerk.
And just for the record, twenty-two oh one four, that was the item that was removed due to the passage of twenty-two seven twenty-four. So we'll skip on to twenty-two oh one five. An ordinance authorizing issuance of a purchase order to Genesis Environmental Solutions, Inc. for the contact basin number three, protective coating systems replacement at the Courtney Bend Water Treatment Plant for four hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Authorizing future change orders not to exceed forty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and/or time extensions as deemed appropriate and appropriating seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the water fund net assets. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Item passes, I'm sorry, bill passes. Is there first readings, Madam State Clerk?
Bill number twenty-two dash zero one six. An ordinance approving the amended twenty-two one, twenty-two annual action plan and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number twenty-two dash zero one seven. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and two cents for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, HMGP, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, making the necessary appropriations and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number twenty-two dash five zero zero. An ordinance authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed seventy-four million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Missouri Development Finance Board in connection with the financing and refinancing of certain costs related to construction and improvement of a multipurpose event center, approving the form of and authorizing the execution of a supplemental financing agreement relating thereto with the Missouri Development Finance Board, providing for the administration of certain special allocation funds previously created by the city, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency. Bill number twenty-two dash five hundred. An ordinance authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed seventy-four million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Missouri Development Finance Board in connection with the financing and refinancing of certain costs related to construction and improvement of a multipurpose event center, approving the form of and authorizing the execution of a supplemental financing agreement relating thereto with the Missouri Development Finance Board, providing for the administration of certain special allocation funds previously created by the city, prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty-two dash five zero one. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents for the Emergency Management Performance Supplemental Grant, EMPG, authorizing future change orders for additional funding or time extensions for the same project, making the necessary appropriations and authorizing certain future appropriations and declaring an emergency. Bill number twenty-two dash five zero one. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-two cents for the Emergency Management Performance Supplemental Grant, EMPG, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, making the necessary appropriations and authorizing certain future appropriations and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty-two dash five zero two. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven dollars and two cents for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, authorizing future change orders for additional funding or time extensions for the same project, making the necessary appropriations and authorizing certain future appropriations and declaring an emergency. Bill number twenty-two dash five zero two. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, SEMA, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven dollars and two cents for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, authorizing future change orders for additional funding or time extensions for the same project, making the necessary appropriations and authorizing certain future appropriations and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty-two dash five zero three. An ordinance adopting quarterly amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two one, twenty-two budget, which was approved by ordinance number one nine two two eight. Bill number twenty-two dash five zero three. An ordinance adopting quarterly amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two one to twenty-two budget, which was approved by ordinance number one nine two two eight. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Ordinance passes.
Bill number twenty-two dash five zero four. An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two one, twenty-two budget, which was approved by ordinance number one nine two two eight. Bill number twenty-two dash five zero four. An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two one to twenty-two budget, which was approved by ordinance number one nine two two eight. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes. Ordinance passes. Excuse me. This brings us to Councilmember Comments. I'll start on my left with Councilman Hobart.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the, was it Street Crimes or they got the, the massive drug bust and money bust and gun bust and awesomeness bust. Officer Sumstead, Sergeant Captain, whichever she is. We appreciate you coming tonight and congratulate you and the rest of the, your colleagues for, for doing that work for us. Thank you very much.
Councilman Steinmeier?
Thank you. Yeah, you know, there's times where we get up here and we get lost in, in some of the haze of what we do. And I was reflecting today that it, it gets wearisome. And so tonight, I want to end by telling you what, what I'm for. Too many times we, we focus on the negative and, and I think it's time for us to look at what, what we stand for. So just a short list of things that I jotted down this afternoon. I'm for peace in our city. I want more peace within our, our borders, of our city. I want transparency. I'm for families. I'm for accountability and I'm, I'm for truth. I'm for good roads, I'm for a good, clean city. I'm for financial accountability. I'm for strong public safety. And I'm for a great reputation. I'd love to see our city's reputation improved. I'm for affordable utilities. I'm for a celebrated history. I'm for jobs and good-paying jobs. I'm for safe neighborhoods, for top-flight education. I'm for capital investment. I'm for strong small business, a strong small business community. I'm for prayer. That's just to name a few. But the one thing I want to be, I want you to know is that I'm for hope for our city. And I'm for it every day. And I, I hope you stand with me and understand and believe with me that we need, we need to be a people of hope. So that's all I have tonight.
Councilmember DeLucy? Okay. Councilman Huff?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilman Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would agree with, with Councilman Steinmeier. There's a lot of good and a lot of hope and, and I would like to present to, we've all got a copy of it that was given in support of our city manager, Zach Walker, from the Independence Chamber of Commerce, of the businesses who, the community are, is speaking, in the business community, in support of, of Mr. Walker and also the Independence Square Association. A big, another big community is in support of Mr. Walker. Spoke to folks in the Inglewood area today who are in strong support of Mr. Walker.
Spoke to folks in the Inglewood area today who are in strong support of Mr. Walker. Some individuals in Kentucky Hills today. I had a busy day. Cut me for a living, so I only get a few days off a week, so I got to cram it in as much as I can. Strong support of Mr. Walker. So, the community's speaking here, and I'll turn these letters over to, actually, the examiner, I don't know if they've got a copy of it, but I know we all have, so the community's speaking here too tonight.
Councilman Stewart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, two years ago, I was elected to the city council, along with two other brand-new city council members. And in my opinion, the reason that was done was because people were tired of the status quo in this city. Since I've been on this council, I've been called a lot of things. I've been called an obstructionist. I've been called the other, I'm a member of the other council. Heck, recently, I heard I was a member of the Chaos Caucus. I was elected for one thing, I promised the citizens that I would do my best to represent them, and that's what I'm doing. So if I lose my job in two years, you know, I guess maybe I didn't do a good enough job. But I'm not going to come in here just to go along, to get along. I'm going to do what I think is right for the city and the people that are representing me. And one other point. I may not have weekly meetings with the city manager, but I do talk to him on a regular basis, as I'm sure he will attest to. We do have phone call conversations and email, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight to talk to us about the National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial. I'm sad that we're a part of this this year. I'm sad for the families who continue to deal with this terrible loss, and our police officers, our entire city. But I know that we will be very proud to be a part of this very special ceremony coming up later this year, and thank you for bringing all those people together who are going to go and represent our city. We have, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting its First Responders' Breakfast on Friday morning at the Uptown Market at 7:30, bright and early for some. And it's a very nice tradition that unfortunately, we've had to take a little break from for the last couple of years because of the pandemic, but we're going to be doing that again on Friday morning, and I think it's vitally, vitally important that we continue these traditions and recognize all of our first responders who go out every single day without hesitancy to protect our city, and for us to show our gratitude and appreciation to all of you, but in particular, to a few individuals who will be recognized at the breakfast on Friday morning. And if you'd like to attend, I'm certain there's probably some space still available, and you can contact the Chamber of Commerce and make your reservation. I'm for communication. My career has been in communication. My 10 years serving on this council, I have emphasized citizen engagement and open communication. My 20-plus years working in this city, that is also what I have focused on, and I am disappointed that we are not communicating well as a unit to represent this city. And I hope that that is something that we will all dedicate ourselves to improving. We cannot make good decisions when we aren't talking to each other. So, I have prided myself, I've worked with many council members, a few city managers, many city staff, and I've prided myself on open communication with everybody, whether I agree with them or not. So, we have a policy in this city that citizen requests will be responded to by staff within 48 hours. Sometimes that's hard to meet, but we continue to strive towards that goal. We have a strategic plan. We have a strategic vision that this council unanimously endorsed, and I feel very strongly that if we were unanimously supporting that, we would be avoiding some of these problems that we are currently having on the council. So I would like for us to set a good example and try to respond to each other when we send emails, when we send, make telephone calls, when we ask for meetings, when we ask for input. I would like to see us work on that and improve that. Mr. State Manager, anything else this evening?
Councilmember Stewart brings some very interesting issues when he calls me, everything from Cloverfields to Floridians with law problems, so we've dealt with quite a bit.
Okay. Very good. We are adjourned.